I actually don't. I just know that I'm one of the ones.
Do you know what day it is?
It seriously was a bucket.
Welcome to tonight's meeting of June 23, 2023. City Council, do we have any questions for the meeting first? I didn't see anything come through. Just double check it. Okay. Council reports, Councilors, I.
So I do have a request. So last week I sent Council a note that I attended the Elizabeth Price memorial service last Wednesday. It was really well attended. It was very somber. And one of the things that I feel would be a nice way for us to recognize her life and legacy, she's been in restaurants for 74 years. And she has a lot of tentacles, if you will, in many areas of communities that cross the city. I think a proclamation would be a nice thing to do that honors her life and legacy. I've drafted it. Larry Price has seen it. He's edited it. And I would like your support to present the proclamation on her life and legacy. If there's support.
Sure, I'm supportive. I see no objections.
I can send you guys the draft language and then, Jody, so if you have any changes, you can make it there. I'll send it to you. Thank you.
Counselor Hart?
No.
Counselor Camellia?
I'll save it for the dais.
Counselor Ireland?
I went to Debbie Teeter's house history tour. That was very interesting. I learned a lot about past mayors and so forth. We had a past mayor that was even tighter with money than me. He stole the cop car because it was running. And he was mad that it was running, so he took it to the police station to ball him out because they're wasting gas. And they almost got arrested for taking the cop car. But it was interesting to hear all the stories. Anyway, I went to the safety open house and that was great. My grandkids came with me and they really enjoyed it. And my daughter-in-law is an influencer over in Ireland. I think she did a video of it, so I'm waiting to see that. She hasn't put it up yet. So that'll be, yeah.
Counselor Demond?
I attended both the same events that Counsel Ireland just mentioned. So thanks to the police and fire department and all the other staff who put on the open house on Saturday. Very well attended and received as always, so appreciate it.
Mayor Protam?
Essentially the same. I only lasted two hours on a Saturday morning, so thank you to everybody who lasted longer. It was, it was great, though. I had a slight heart attack with the shots going off with the.
Three times I had the heart attack.
I know, I know. They tried to warn us. They tried to warn us, but it didn't work.
I thought I was gonna kill poor Parker Brown because he was with me the first time and I almost knocked him out. I thought we were hit. I thought we were dead.
But yes, it was, it was, it was great.
Last week, Jody and I had the mayor manager talk on Tuesday. Our guests were one of our union firefighters, Corbin, and we had Chief Burke. We had Austin. We had Paul from Utilities. And at the time we were walking in, we shared that paramedics and potholes was suggested. And by the end of the two hour or an hour, it was suggested it would be paramedics and pavement. So ever flowing and everybody laughs, but it was good stuff and people always have such great questions. Obie went to, he's our representative for Jeffco EDC and he sent out the minutes, but I, as alternate, just listened in. And I listened in because I wasn't sure if I'd get from there to Elizabeth's funeral. And it was packed. And I didn't go down to, I had talked to Mr. Price prior and said, I just can't be in the crowds. So I gave him a hug, what was just us, and he knows what she meant to me. So I always said to Elizabeth, I want to be you when I grow up. Debbie Teeter, it was fun and I have 50 minutes and 47 seconds on the history of the Harris House. Talks about the ghosts and so just a fun event. And as soon as I have time to make the Historical Society a YouTube and get it on there because it's so big, people can look at it. But the open house for public safety, I want to thank you three for being there. I was able to be there the full four hours. I know Counsel Demond had graduation at his house. He stayed till about noon and thank you for coming. I knew you still weren't feeling good. So, but I love that. And all of the people that go to that, I have no idea the elves that set that all up, but it is the entire parking lot. It's everything. And they set us up, so Chief Hose was next to me to talk about the needs for the fire station. And then it was us. And so if they were coming this way, they got us first and then we sent them over here. And if they were coming this way, he answered their questions and they came to us. I was able to get 14 people to sign up for our, whenever, and I told them, I don't know if it's this year or next year, but we need a committee of residents. And so have 14 people so far signed up. We had no negatives and trust me, I know that people speak their mind because somebody did last year to me. And so it was just nice and I love it because it's multi-generational. You see three generations coming to those things and the kids having so much fun. So I was gonna say to the council, I am making a list of people that want to help with our efforts for paramedics and pavement. And people on Saturday had some great ideas that we could go around to where the trucks, food trucks are into the neighborhoods and start educating. And we could certainly do that. And with this group, we can conquer and divide and have people that want to go and do the public speaking, people that want to walk. Get, so we're in the starting phases of all that. I will add all of your names if you want it. You just talk to me privately and I will put your names on the list so that you know what goes out if you choose to. And I did find a treasurer for us because there is a committee that has been used before. I mentioned it last year to the proper people, but they never use them. It's got $8,277.24 in it. And the new treasurer will meet with the person that's name is currently on it and has been trying to get his name off of it. And we will do all of the paperwork at the bank so that we can start accepting money. So, and for me, I have scans on Monday, so stay tuned. And a few extra thoughts for me would be, I love it. What do you have for us?
Nothing for pre-meeting, Mayor. I have a brief report for the dais, so that's it.
Okay. 20 minutes.
Mayor, please answer my.
Can we, any of our post-meeting stuff? 20 minutes. I like fraternizing with you all, but also.
Obie, give me not a city email.
We do have, yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We can do one now. I'm just gonna carry it here.
What's the first word? Signing, signs, revision. Yes, I'm resigning, naming. Oh, yeah.
Just give us a minute.
You have to pass it down. Sure. I just need like a personal email. I don't want to use city emails. And a phone number that you want a text on.
Or to do post-meeting item 1C, which is verbal update and next steps regarding 7255 Irving Street, which is also known as the Midland Building. And Larry Dora as deputy city manager oversees community services department. And I'll turn it over to you, Larry. We have 18 minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Once again, Larry Dora, deputy city manager. Pleasure to be with you tonight. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protam and councilors. On May 15, the manager's office received an email requesting an update on the status of the property just described by Mr. Andrews. And then that was further relayed to me by the city council as I was serving as acting city manager on Monday, May 19. By chance, because of the email, Director Kimball and I had reached out to the owner, Mr. John Andrea Nakas, and asked for a meeting at City Hall to discuss the status of his development and his intentions in the Westminster community. He agreed to that meeting and that happened just a couple of days after our discussion with council. Forgive me, I just ran down here.
Take a deep breath.
That's my breath, just a moment. And we learned a lot about his intentions for the project and about his history and background here in Colorado. He's a similar retired entrepreneur involved in the restaurant business and a lot of other hospitality businesses here in Colorado. He lives in the town of Parker. He's owned that building for a number of years with a partner and they had an enforceable lease on the building, but the occupant chose not to move in, but rather continue paying rent. So there was a little activation. Just by way of history for, for the community, I want to share that. He did express remorse over the situation and circumstances, but you know, we're not seeing a lot of activation. So there were new commitments made and a new engagement on the part of the owner and his development team. And they committed to engagement and development. But to set the stage for why I'm here and what I might suggest is, you should know that in February of 2024, the city council approved a rezoning and an official development plan. That's been a long time and that was over three years in the making at that time. Several months later in July of 2024, which is a bit of a, a bit of a gap in time, a building permit application was submitted with building plans. Staff responded to those immediately, letting the owner know that the building plans were submitted under the 2015 building codes. And so unfortunately, they had to really return to the drawing board. Updated plans were submitted in February, again, some seven or eight months later under current building codes. Staff responded immediately and let the development team know that the building plans for plumbing, mechanical, utilities and occupancy were all deficient. No fire suppression submittal was provided at all. No building elevations were submitted as required. No site plan was submitted as required. And since that time, there was no response to staff at all since March until Director Kimball and I reached out, honestly, at the impetus of the city council. So on, on the 19, excuse me, the 21st, we agreed that we would get the project team back together. I was present for that meeting on June 5 with eight or nine staff members and a few of the members of the development team and the owner. And it was apparent from the outset that there was a disconnect as to what was necessary to really move the project forward. It was unusual. We don't often see quite that, to be right honest with you. But there was again, a commitment to engagement. The owner was leaving for a time away and it was understood what was necessary. And we agreed to two follow-up meetings, one on June 18 and one on July 9. The June 18 meeting occurred and I regret to report that only one member of the development team was even present, although we had a staff team of nine, ready to answer questions, facilitate next steps, take action, you know, respond to the submittals. So that was very disappointing and I felt it necessary at that time to inform the council of this situation. And that in my experience, it has been that past performance is typically an indication of future performance and that I just don't know when, you know, the next step might occur. But we do have a July 9 meeting scheduled with the owner and the development team and the entire staff that could bring this process forward. But I would suggest, and you know, that if this development team isn't able to respond in good faith and move forward with consistent, regular connections and responding to the needs that are required for a sufficient development of this scale, that it would make sense for the city council to make appropriations in the event that abatement is necessary and the chief building official would find it necessary to abate public nuisance and a danger to public health, safety and welfare. So with that, thank you for the minutes to describe that. I've almost caught my breath and I'm happy to answer questions. You know, I know that staff responded brief recently to, I think even just today or Friday, to the cost for demolition of another building in Westminster without describing all of that. And oftentimes in that work, it's difficult to know the amount of environmental abatement that's necessary. So I would put a very rough estimate of that cost at somewhere between 150,000 and 300,000. I know that's a broad range, but I want to be conservative with that. And I'd like to bring that to you on July 14 at a regular meeting of the city council, should that become necessary. And should these future meetings just not progress in the manner that they haven't progressed to this point in the city? So with that, I'll just close my comments. I'm happy to answer the question.
Mr. Thor, can you describe specifically how far it would go? What does that mean?
Depending on the findings of the chief building official, I think it would involve the demolition of the structure that's on, on the site, should the chief building official find that necessary. Thank you, Mr. Andrews.
Okay. You have everybody wants to speak, but Counselor Demond?
I appreciate the report. I was the one who sent the email and the follow-up question. This has been a nuisance since before I was here. To me, we need to take those steps. So I mean, I'm happy to let you try to meet with him on the 9th with that keyed up. And I think they should know that, that that's the next step. Because at this point, I think that they're just gaming the system. And you know, if they want to prove otherwise, get to work. I mean, this has been far too long. And you know, it is, in my opinion, it's a danger to the community. It's a blight to the community. I think it's probably the single thing I've got the most complaints in my eight years about. So you know, I think we, you know, them getting a last chance is really us being graceful because I don't think at this point, in my opinion, they deserve it. So that's my opinion.
Mayor Protam?
I'm of a similar opinion. I mean, I encounter this in my day job and I, you know, have to work through court summons and things like that so that we can just continue to get people moving. And so I like the fact that you have set some dates down. I was gonna be my question, when you would originally email me, where are the dates? What's the next steps? And can we start to enforce? And if it does, I mean, I'm happy to just enforce in some way, you know, whether that's financial. And if they're not responding to that, if we've been doing that in the past, then I would say for sure, let's move forward on a more drastic approach because if, we don't want to just continue to do the same thing and get the same results. So yeah, feel free to underline that point about demo.
That's right. I was just gonna ask, is there any liens on the property at this point?
It was described to me by the owner that he does not have any debt leverage mortgages on the property. We haven't officially and formally searched that. I know that, and I, for the sake of brevity, at the request of Mr. Andrews, I didn't describe the various and numerous actions of our code enforcement officers. I don't know if the city might have any of those as liens on the property just at the moment here.
That's what I was asking, if the city has put any from telling them to clean it up and they didn't clean it up, fines for that.
I can tell you that, I beg your pardon, I beg, I was just saying that staff has acted within the fullest extent of the Westminster code to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Camellia?
I was following a similar train of thought. Thank you for your work on keeping our side of the due diligence here. I'm just wondering if there's any other road we can go on aside from demolition of the building? And if that's not a possibility, okay. But is there any other use that, you know, once it was back in our hands? It sounds like probably not because we are not the owner, but just letting you expand there.
Let's see, well, the, the, the finding of the chief building official would be relative strictly to the building itself and cause for abatement and a protection of public health, safety and welfare. So it would be related directly to the structure. I don't think it's necessarily the ability of staff within the regulations to get between an owner, public health, safety and welfare, and maybe another user. That, that could be very, very complicated and take quite a bit of time.
I'm sorry, can I ask a clarifying question about what the counselor just asked? Because she said if it was in our, it wouldn't be in our ownership at that point. We would just tear the building down. They would still own the property and they would have to pay for the abatement unless they didn't pay us back for the abatement. Am I accurate?
You are accurate.
Thank you.
And I, can I add a clarification to the two questions from the two councilors? There have been a series of enforcement actions over the years by staff and abatements. And those abatements have then been later paid by the, by the owner. So it's, it has been a series and a legacy of city enforcement, as Mr. Thor said, to the fullest extent of our codes. This is different. This is now taking the abatement to the final stage, which is removal of the, of the public safety hazard, not remediate.
That makes sense, right? Okay. I think that we've done everything we can. I guess my last suggestion was if it's at all possible, if they do come to the table, to maybe offer them, you know, some sort of, you know, can we take this property from you? Kind of, you know, can it come? Because then we have more control over the property instead of just letting it sit there in the owner's hands.
I could offer this at this point is not seeing, Mayor not seeing any objection at this point. If I were to come back to the city council on July 14, I would certainly have some manner of an update if, if that's of interest and could describe updated information that I may have.
Let's finish hearing. Counselor Hart?
Yeah. So I agree with Counselor Demond and Mayor Protam. Funny, I also had something about the demolition written down. If it, I don't know how much more it costs for deconstruction over demolition for environmental impact because when you do a deconstruction, a lot of those materials get reused and recycled instead of going into the landfill where with demolition, everything just goes to landfill generally. So if there's not a huge cost difference for the environmental impact, I think deconstruction would be great. I know that they've done that in, to some buildings in Boulder. So I know it's, I know it's possible to do here in Colorado. Not everybody has the infrastructure for that, but I know that we do. And I have no interest.
And I have no interest in buying the building because the properties that we do have have cost us quite a bit of money. And I'm, if they're the ones that have to pay for the demolition, I don't want to pay for the demolition. I don't want to pay for the, I don't, I am not interested in purchasing it at all.
Counselor Zadi.
I agree with my colleagues. I'll just add that if the July 9th meeting goes well, we need, so for, if they watch this, right? And they come on July 9th and pretend, or, you know, and give you enough so that we don't go further, I would still want to see this regardless on July 14th, is my point. I don't really care what happens on July 9th. I would just say bring it to us on the 14th and tell us if they did something. Just give it to us to hear what they said on July 9th. But I would bring it regardless.
Counselor Demont, you had something?
Real quick, I, some might agree, like, I'd want some teeth in it. Like, I don't want them to hear this and just come back and keep gaming the system. There's got to be some very definite things where we're going to, this is the action. And if it goes another month, we're taking action, like, enough is enough. And I just wanted to give support for what Counselor Ha said in terms of owning it. I don't, I don't want to own the building that everybody's complaining about. That building needs to either, they either need to do what they were going to do to refurbish it or it needs to be torn down, in my opinion.
We have been more than generous. It's time to act. And they could come with the best plan possible, but we, we have what's happened in the past. So why should I believe it for one more meeting? And to stand you all up at the last one is ridiculous. So I'm for moving forward. I don't want to give them any grace. I'm ready to, the community down there is ready for somebody to buy that property that wants to do something with it. And it is prime property that something nice can be done down there.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem and council members, I appreciate the time here before your regular meeting. I think I understand your direction. And the staff team will move forward as such and will return on July 14th. Thank you.
Thank you for rushing down here.
Thank you.
Okay. Take a quick break.
My name is Sherri Griffin.
Can't hear.
Can't hear?
One second.
Can you hear me now? No?
One second.
How about that? Oh, there we go. Okay. Hi, guys. My name is Sherri Griffin. I wanted to tell you how very grateful I am that you will be reviewing options for warning signage regarding Rocky Flats in the study session tonight. I'm also grateful to Deborah Sagaloff with PSR Colorado, Chris Allred with Rocky Mountain Peace and Justice Center, John Lipsky and others for their hard work and dedication to bring awareness to the health risks posed by Rocky Flats and the Wildlife Refuge. In addition, I wanted to thank Eric Oetzlberger, Parks, Rec and Library Director, for inviting this group to provide him with examples of language for council's consideration. The three options that are included in the packet sound nice, and thank you to the team who created them. However, on May 8th, Jefferson County requested that the city reconsider improvements to the single-track social trail as council had reaffirmed the vote to decline any trail improvement in April. Rather than reconsider improvements to the trail, the city has remained focused on moving forward with signage and no trail improvements. Jefferson County's influence is obvious in all three options. They all sound like a PR campaign that attempts to balance their position and the position of the Department of Energy and U.S. Fish and Wildlife, that it is safe to recreate and enjoy the diversity of wildlife, like there's nothing to worry or pretty little heads about. This signage needs to be a warning first and foremost, not an apology for the nuclear weapons industry, and certainly not an advertisement for, quote, "a vital habitat preserved for recreation and conservation," as is stated in option two. In addition, the refuge was not created to protect Xeric Tallgrass Prairie and habitat for threatened and endangered species, as is stated in the current signage at the entrances to the refuge, which is pictured in attachment A in your packet. The buffer zone was never cleaned up in order to save time and money. It was re-designated from a buffer zone to a wildlife refuge to prevent development. And now I have a question. Is the kiosk that is illustrated in this package the only sign that is up for discussion? And since there is to be no trail improvement, and currently the Westminster Social Trail does not connect to the bridge, would construction of a kiosk require an improvement? What about small trail marker-type metal signs with the symbol for radiation on the social trail leading to the bridge? In addition to the three numbered options, there is a fourth option, attachment one, recommended language by stakeholders. This is the original submission by the group of people I just thanked. Please support option one, I mean, attachment one. And once again, I am always thankful that you are here, that you listen, and that you are concerned about public health and the safety of this community and the surrounding communities.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Deborah Sagaloff.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Deborah Sagaloff from PSR Colorado, the Colorado Chapter of Physicians for Social Responsibility. I'd like to start by again thanking the Westminster City Council for recognizing the health risks that the Rocky Flats Wildlife Refuge poses to visitors and for voting in recent months in a manner consistent with this. Unfortunately, despite the best of intentions on your part, the overpass above Indiana Street is nonetheless proceeding. Therefore, it's imperative that Westminster construct signs that very strongly and clearly warn visitors about to enter the refuge of the health risks they would be facing by proceeding. Potential visitors need to know that the site is still contaminated with plutonium, a radioactive substance that if taken up into the body is an extremely potent carcinogen, and that the plutonium in the soil of the refuge can readily become airborne by winds that frequently traverse over Rocky Flats, increasing the devastating risk of inhaling plutonium. We also thank the council and Eric Hutzleberger for allowing us, in collaboration with other local organizations and stakeholders, to contribute one of the signage options presented to you this evening. Of the options to be considered, we contend that the one we submitted contains the strongest warning to potential visitors to the refuge. Therefore, we're asking you to please adopt the option entitled "Recommended Language Suggested by Stakeholders" that's included as attachment number one in your mini-packet. Furthermore, regardless of the wording that's ultimately decided upon, we strongly recommend that the signage always include the international symbol for radioactivity and the words "warning" and "radioactive." Thank you very much for your consideration of this very important matter.
Thank you.
The next speaker is John Lipsky.
Thank you very much. Hello, council and mayor. My name is John Lipsky. And 36 years ago, I served several search warrants at Rocky Flats as an FBI agent. There were criminal search warrants because there were allegations that there was contamination and misuse and violation of federal laws. What I'm getting at is, the predication for my search warrants was an admission by a DOE attorney that they couldn't defend the activities at Rocky Flats, and that all the while, the public was lied to. And then fast forward to 2005, I was a plaintiff's witness for the Cook trial, and on Valentine's Day, 2006, the jury of their peers came back and said that plutonium had contaminated areas of Arvada, and that the plutonium would never go away. And it still hasn't gone away because the number of years that have passed doesn't, isn't a drop in the bucket compared to 24,000-year half-life of plutonium. I can't say it enough that the signage on the Rocky Mountain Greenway can't be an invitation. It has to be a caution, has to be a warning, because you never know if you're going to breathe in a particle. And I can tell you that it does happen on blustery days because, a year ago in April, Dr. Michael Ketterer and I took air samples on Indiana Street, just about where the bridge is being built. And after Michael analyzed the filters, the amount of plutonium from Rocky Flats, because he could fingerprint it, proved that it was over the state limit for the plutonium in soil, which means that a unique construction technique should have been employed for all this construction. And on a blustery day, you're going to get plutonium in your face, and if you get it inside you, it can cause damage, not only to yourself but to your children, because of the teratogenic effects of DNA. So I just, please, consider no invitations. We need warnings. We need a little bit of history about the plant, because the half-life of memory is, doesn't exist anymore. Just the other day, I saw where the State Department of Natural Resources is involved in permitting a gravel pit on the west side of the refuge, and CDPHE wrote in opposition to it, but they even discounted what one of the individual hazardous substance sites was non-radioactive, which wasn't true. The half-life of memory, we're in the third generation, it's gone. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Alan Farb.
Several items. First, thanks to the city for opening a cooling center to those residents who might otherwise have seriously suffered from the harsh effects of the extreme heat we experienced Friday and Saturday especially. By making available such sheltering, the city lessened the potential harmful adverse effects on people's health and well-being, perhaps even preventing an unnecessary death. While passing out water on Saturday, I still found too many unhoused people who remained on the street. None of the 12 or so folks I made contact with was aware of the cooling center. So however the city can improve communicating to people lacking easy access to city notifications, that would be great, even maybe sandwich boards signs around town. Also want to thank you for the upcoming resolution that acknowledges the June 1st anti-Semitic fire attack on the peaceful Boulder demonstrators while walking along Pearl Street Mall. The intentionality of the resolution will serve as an openly respectful declaration that this city stands against violence as an answer to even the most severe, even uncompromising of disputes and divisions. I'm not sure, however, that the, in the resolution, the "Stand With Us," a pro-Israel but decidedly anti-Palestinian organization, should be singularly highlighted in this resolution for the city to encourage as a resource on anti-Semitism. I personally find this group to be polarizing in its rhetoric, and that there are many other sources the city could draw on standing against anti-Semitism. I think it's important also to respectfully acknowledge the June 14th murders and the attempted murders of Minnesota state legislators. Such acts indeed unsettle those who publicly choose to represent the rest of us, and I'm sorry for any such concerns or angst that any people's representatives might feel. As well, we ache for the June 14th Salt Lake City victim who was also demonstrating peacefully, who was apparently killed by an armed security volunteer who is believed to have tried to shoot a man, brandishing an AR-15-style rifle. Utah, however, is in open carry and concealed carry state. It's incredibly sad that such gross acts of violence have become an acceptable means to respond to real or perceived differences. And sadly, while we often say that hate has no place here, or violence will not be tolerated, or that's not who we are, the reality is that hate is here, violence is tolerated, and sadly, yes, that's who we are.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Cindy Stoudt.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Portem, councilors, and city manager. My name's Cindy Stoudt. I'm here representing the Westy Dog Park Guardians, along with other members of our leadership team. In the interest of your time and with your permission, the Guardians would like to show support by standing at their seats. Thank you. We're here tonight to offer our support as you make a decision on the signage to be posted on the Greenway Trail on Westminster's side of the new bridge. First, we'd like to say thank you to the Rocky Mountain Peace and Justice Center and Physicians for Social Responsibility for working with the city on warning signs for citizens traveling to and from Rocky Flats. The Guardians support the strongest possible language in your packet tonight, titled "Recommended Language by Stakeholders," which is attachment one in your mini-packet. We believe this is necessary and appropriate, as the completion of the bridge will bring more traffic into the dog park. The increased traffic heightens our concerns about potential tracking of plutonium-contaminated soil through whose and the off-leash area. So we also thank this council for its decisions to warn the public of the risks of recreating Rocky Flats and to protect the health and safety of dog park users for the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Alicia Case.
Hi there. Thank you for this opportunity. Hi there. My name is Alicia Casey. In the 10 years that I've been working on this issue around Rocky Flats, this is one of the first times that we've had an opening to address signage that is so badly needed after having been denied countless times by the Department of Energy and Fish, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, to add signage to the area. First, let's just talk about the area in and around Rocky Flats. Right now, at the center of the Rocky Flats Wildlife Refuge is a active nuclear waste superfund site that the DOE maintains, deemed still too polluted to be open to the public. This is the area that the Department of Energy and U.S. Fish have refused to put any sort of signage or warning signs on or around. No one is denying that there are elevated levels of weapons-grade plutonium in and around the area, including all over the Wildlife Refuge, in addition to many other industrial chemicals left in place from the nuclear weapons factory that once existed on that site. All the agencies, including Colorado Department of Health, the EPA, Department of Energy, will tell you about how much plutonium they know and acknowledge is in that field. They will also tell you that because of this, they have determined that there is a safe and acceptable level of exposure to weapons-grade plutonium, because that is all they can do. They won't tell you how to warn and protect our community from the dangers that have been left there. Guardianship and oversight has been passed to us in the community. Our Department of Health has abandoned us. Our government, Department of Energy, has done its best to wipe its hands cleans of us, and the EPA, a shell of what it once was, has fallen in line with the DOE messaging. We, however, have an opportunity to demonstrate today, and with this decision, what responsible nuclear waste practices look like for our community and others that suffer the same fate that these sites have around the nation. Unfortunately, the weapons-grade plutonium that was left there does not forget, burning on into the very distant future with a half-life of 24,000 years. This area will remain toxic for countless generations. It is up to us to do all that we can to educate and warn our future inhabitants. It's only been 50 years since all of that was deposited there, and we have a long, long way to go. So it is my pleasure and excitement and request that we implement the strongest signage that we can, and as long as we continue to allow recreation on such a dangerous site, that we do all that we can to educate and warn our communities so that people can make an informed decision on whether or not to recreate there. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Chris Allred.
Hi, my name is Chris Allred, commenting for Rocky Mountain Peace and Justice Center. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight in support of warning signage at Rocky Flats. We are asking that you please support the original recommended language by stakeholders, being passed around to you now. This language was proposed by Physicians for Social Responsibility, the Colorado Chapter, and agreed upon by multiple local stakeholders and community groups. I would especially like to thank the Westy Dog Park Guardians and Physicians for Social Responsibility for their involvement to support this signage. And we are very grateful to the city of Westminster for your vote in September 2024 to withdraw from the Rocky Mountain Greenway, and your leadership in support of government transparency and protecting public health. It really means a lot to this community and to many people throughout the region, really the nation, because nuclear waste is not only a local issue, it impacts people and communities throughout the nation. So, the staff presentation tonight includes three alternatives for signage. Of the three alternatives, we believe that more clarity is needed to address the gravity of the situation. This is why we are advocating for the original language recommended by stakeholders. This is a warning sign, most importantly, as other speakers have mentioned. It is about public education of the hazards at Rocky Flats. It is vitally important to include the internationally recognized radioactive symbol. By supporting the strongest warning signage possible, you will be helping to bring justice and stop the cycle of the Department of Energy's lack of transparency and accountability. Seven school districts, four local governments, community groups throughout the region and nation continue to establish new precedent, bringing awareness to the hazards at Rocky Flats. Let's send a message unequivocally that we will not sacrifice our health for the nuclear weapons industry. I would like to also support further discussion about next steps to support a public forum to address Rocky Flats, now that the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council has been disbanded, and to preserve the decade of public comments that were deleted shortly before the council dissolved. Once again, please support the strongest warning signage possible, the original language recommended by stakeholders, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Tom Lambo.
It's good to see everybody. My name's Tom Lambo. Just want to say that God is in control, and I'm here to lift up Westminster in prayer. So please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, in Jesus's name, we invite you here to Westminster to be our God. There's nothing that surprises you. You created the beginning, and you can see far off into the future. Your hand has moved through the centuries to bring us to this very moment in time. And because you are who you are, we give you all praise, glory, and honor. In Revelation 4:11, it states, "You are worthy, O Lord, our God, to receive glory and honor and power; for you created all things, and they exist because you created what you pleased." It pleased you to create us and to put us here at this time, guide us in our lives, and let us never forget to extend the mercy you've shown us to those we come in contact with. Father, I lift up to you all those that call Westminster home. We're all created by you, and we have had many influences that come into our lives throughout our years. We have formed differing opinions to every situation. We're all aware of the conflicts here in our nation, as well as around the world. All of us have been affected. Lives have been shattered, and lives have been lost. We all want peace, but we can't decide how to achieve it. We easily grow weary with calamity that surrounds us. Comfort those that have been directly affected by the recent tragedies. Bring peace to them and those around them. There's good advice for our lives found in 1 Corinthians 16:11, as it states, "Seek the Lord and his strength; seek his presence continually. Give us your strength, and give us your presence." We need to be surrounded by you so you can have influence in our lives. We need to do better to those around us. As you look at us, you are pleased with your creation. Help us to make decisions that please you and bring peace to our hurting world. You are our God, and we are your people. In Jesus's name, we pray. Amen. And finally, to Alan, and to those that regularly take care of the needy in our community, I give to you Proverbs 14:31. Whoever oppresses a poor man insults his maker, but he who is generous to the needy honors him. Alan, you honor God with all your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you.
You all have a nice night.
The next speaker is Randy Stafford.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Portem, honorable councilors. It's good to be back. I want to start by thanking you for withdrawing from the Rocky Mountain Greenway Flap Grant Partnership a while back. That was courageous and responsible of you. And I'm here tonight to urge you to choose the strongest possible language for the signage at the Indiana Street Crossing, the attachment one, "Language Recommended by Stakeholders." I know John Lipsky commented a little bit earlier about he, about how he and Dr. Michael Ketterer conducted their own air sampling on Indiana Street in April of 2024, and definitively proved that Rocky Flats' specific plutonium by isotope ratio is blowing off the site in 20 minutes on a seven-inch disc of filter paper that captured billions and billions of Rocky Flats plutonium atoms. I have a little bit of additional news tonight that I'm going to go ahead and share. Dr. Ketterer installed an air sampler on the deck of a house in the Lake Crest neighborhood on the southeast corner of Stanley Lake, and it operated for eight weeks this spring. And the tissue, the filter paper in the sampler was swapped out every two weeks, and Dr. Ketterer analyzed it, and he found Rocky Flats' specific plutonium by isotope ratio blowing in the air in the Lake Crest neighborhood on the southeast corner of Stanley Lake, detectable amounts. So, we know that plutonium blows off the site, and we, several of us pleaded with Jefferson County a month or so ago to stop this project, because it's immoral. They didn't listen. I'm just going to read a little bit of my comment to Jefferson County at that time. "The Agency for Toxic Substances and Disease Registry maintains a toxicological profile for plutonium," which states on page five, "Breathing plutonium-contaminated air is the most dangerous way to be exposed to plutonium. If you know or suspect that plutonium has been released to the air, you should leave the area immediately." We know that plutonium is released to the air there. It's insane to encourage the public to recreate there, and for that reason, I urge you to adopt the strongest possible signage language to protect public health. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Ed Knudsen.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, council members. My name is Ed Knudsen. I'm the owner of Barkentine Brewing Company in Edgewater, Colorado. As you know, we have signed a lease with the city to hopefully become the tenant at the building you're considering making a significant investment in at 3915 73rd Avenue. I wanted you to be aware of a couple things. I appreciate the size of this investment, and I wanted you to know that your investment is in good hands. I'm a Westminster native. I grew up at 92nd Raleigh, about five blocks from here. Went to Shaw Heights Elementary. Went to Westminster High School, and I'm deeply committed to this part of the town. Stephanie will tell you embarrassingly that I was a homecoming king at Westminster High School, and sat in a Mustang convertible right down 73rd Avenue for our homecoming parade. So, I know this space, and I, like I said, I'm deeply committed to this project. We opened Barkentine Brewing on February 29th, Leap Day, 2020. We had two really good weeks and then got shut down for COVID. We had no idea that that was coming. It was not in our business plan, but we muscled through it. And I bring that up because I want you to know that we can overcome any kind of struggle or any kind of challenge. This neighborhood, I think, is an amazing opportunity, and when we were looking for a new space for our second taproom, this stood out like a diamond in the rough for us. It checks off a lot of boxes. It's a beautiful building. We don't take that lightly, and we don't take the investments you're going to make in it lightly. So we're going to work hard to make this a successful endeavor for both of us. I, too, am going to be making a significant investment in the building. And I want you to know that, you know, the reason that we're doing this is that we're capable of brewing more beer at our current location than we can sell in that one taproom. So our business is very successful today, and we want to open a second taproom so that we create the same kind of community environment that our customers enjoy in Edgewater. I hear this project referred to often in the meetings that I've sat in so far as a restaurant. And although we'll have food in the restaurant, in the space, it's not a restaurant. I consider a restaurant to be a place where you come, sit down, eat, and leave so that you can turn the table. And that's not what we're creating here. This is an environment like our taproom in Edgewater, where you can come, be comfortable, spend as much time as you want, have a beer. If you're hungry, we have some food options for you, but don't leave. And we do a lot of things at our current location, like baby showers, investment clubs, and things like that, where the community can gather. And we hope to make that the same space and same environment that we enjoy there in the Westminster Project. So thank you so much for your investment, and again, it's in good hands.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Dino Valente.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, members of council, city managers. I'm here to speak in favor of the investment in the 3915, 3615, the rodeo building, the building that my grandfather was the original tenant did. For clarification, my family has zero financial interest remaining in that building. I think my father received the last payment 30-some years ago from Niles Dingman, the second owner, from whom the city bought. second owner, from whom the city bought. We've had the opportunity to meet with Ed and his son and see their plans go through. My father had a monumental walkthrough and identified things that jaws are still dropped. He hadn't been in there as a grocery store for 55 years. That building is near and dear to our heart. What the city chooses to do is the city's choice. It's your property. There's no question. It's a big investment, but a big part of that investment is because the city has let it sit and neglect for so very, very long. There's a lot that has to be done for any tenant. You could choose to tear it down. That would be bad. You're still going to spend a lot of money to tear it down. You have a fantastic operator in Ed and his son and their team. There's no question they're going to put a spark in the neighborhood that we've asked for for many, many years. The time is now. This is the right project. I know it's an expensive pill to swallow, but on behalf of the Valenti family and our 72 years of business in the city, we are 100% behind this project, the city's investment. As Ed has said, we thank you very much for the investment. Special thanks to Stephanie Trawler and others on her team in that who have worked tirelessly for years picking up where Tony Chacon left off, and Vicky Bunson, who started this drive. May she rest in peace many, many years ago. The time is now to move this forward. Speaking of moving forward, on another matter, I would like to thank City Manager Andrews and Mayor McNally for their extraordinarily hard work on finding ways to help get Fire Stations 7 and 8 and the other upgrades started on the funding. This is also the time to move forward, but you guys need to unite behind a plan that brings everybody into the conversation. Stop worrying about the mechanics of the conversation. Let's get this done now. I personally favor bonding and as little sales tax as possible, but our citizens aren't getting younger, and they deserve the best. And we know we have the best fire department in the metro area. Let's make sure they have the resources they need. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last speaker is Jim Fennemore. Tissues. Welcome.
I'd like to wait and get these passed out before I start my term, please. All good? All righty. First of all, I want to start out real quick is I believe in good fire department protection. I also believe in good streets. Also believe in good police protection. So I think that anything we can do to improve all of those is a great deal. As you can see on this handout that I gave you today, June 23rd, 4:00 PM, there are three customers in the Barkin Restaurant. This is in a mall. The building you guys are proposing using is not in a mall. If you take $17 off the menu there, the city tax is 68 cents. You're putting up $4.5 million at 68 cents. That's going to take 6,000 or 6,617, 674,000 people to pay for this. There's no rent the first year, does not meet proper off-street parking as required. You put four doors in the east side, two are large garage doors, two are man doors, and there's a window. This reduces the structural integrity of a 70-year-old masonry building. I don't think the building can... And there's already posts that are in the building that are structural, holding up the west side. I think we need to respect the Jewish church on the north side that's right next to the park. You know, you all took an oath to represent the citizens. You have a fiduciary responsibility to represent the citizens of Westminster. I don't think this money should be used for a private business. The $4.5 million should be put in the fire station across the street where the women can have quarters to change and shower in, and also expand the bays for the fire equipment. I don't know. Some of you guys are going to be running for election, specifically mayor. I don't know how you're going to be able to say that you're doing a fiduciary responsibility when you're giving $4.5 million towards a private business. I think that's not proper for the city to be doing. How about financing everybody else that has private businesses? Thank you very much.
Thank you. That was our last speaker. That brings us to City Managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Portem, City Council. First, thanks to our speakers tonight. Very much appreciate you taking the time to come and be with us this evening and share your comments. City Council does listen. Staff listens, and anyone seeking follow-up, we will follow up with you directly afterwards. Next slide, please. Speaking of community input, the city is seeking community input regarding neighborhood streets and emergency services based on City Council's direction. At our last meeting of City Council, the city will begin polling the community tomorrow about potential funding solutions for our neighborhood streets and our emergency services. This is a public service announcement tonight. Residents may be receiving a text message. If you're in the group of residents contacted by our polling firm, that will come from a 303 or 720 area code, and it will have a Westminster logo on it, and that will be coming from our polling firm, Magellan. We expect to have results come back for our July 7th City Council Study Session, so staff will bring back Magellan Polling Firm and a report summarizing our community's input on the two measures regarding neighborhood streets and emergency services. The city will continue this community conversation throughout the summer, and we will have scheduled a July 24th meeting at our Westview Recreation Center from 5:00 to 8:00 PM, and we'll have a lot more information on that, but I wanted to put that out in people's calendars now that as we work through the summer and engage with our community, we will work towards that date with a community meeting at Westview. Next slide, please. Also, this is an update. Councilor Carmelia has asked us a couple times about this, and we are pleased to announce tonight that our water utility has won two prestigious national awards. Earlier this month, the city's water distribution team won the American Waterworks Association President's Award for Distribution Excellence, and the city's wastewater team won American Waterworks Association Director's Award for Wastewater Treatment Excellence. The city won these awards for its exceptional commitment to providing superior quality drinking water and operational excellence across both of our utility elements, water and our wastewater. The city's utilities teams also had a strong showing at the AWWA's Hydrant Hysteria Pipe Tapping and Meter Challenge contests, which are national timed competitions that serve to demonstrate operational excellence and skills mastery. So our staff took their day-to-day skills, took them to the national competition, and did very, very well there. So congratulations to our outstanding staff across our water and wastewater utility. Next slide, please. Also, by way of city update, on Wednesday this week, June 25th, from 7:00 to 9:30 AM, please do join the city and Denver Regional Council of Governments for Bike to Work Day. Stop by downtown Westminster at our booth at the US 36 and Sheridan Underpass, and you can see that in the image there. That is our underpass underneath the 36 exchange, and we will have a booth there. So ride your bike on Bike to Work Day and get some great stuff from the city and our biking partners. Next slide, please. On tonight's agenda, we have one information-only item. That's regarding boards and commissions and based on council's direction. That will describe term limits, impacts, and options, and that's an update. On consent, we have three items, and we also then have two items of new business. The first is a first reading of Councilor's Bill Number 20 for supplemental appropriation for the adaptive reuse of 3915 West 73rd for the Bark Restaurant, also known as the rodeo building. Second is a Resolution Number 8 regarding condemning the anti-Semitic attack on participants of the Run for Their Lives Walk in Boulder and denouncing anti-Semitism in all its forms. And finally, in post-meeting, we have two items remaining. Proposed update to the city's site naming and renaming policy and a presentation on a proposed signage on the Woman Creek Parcel, and that will be related to the Rocky Mountain Greenway Trail that many of our speakers spoke on tonight. The verbal update and next steps was provided in pre-meeting tonight on 7255 Irving Street, also known as the Midland Building. Next slide, please. This week, we have on Tuesday, tomorrow night, June 24th, Planning Commission right here at Westminster City Hall. That will be from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. I mentioned Bike to Work Day. That's at 7:00 AM to 9:30 at the Sheridan Underpass in downtown Westminster. And also on Wednesday, June 25th, the Environmental Advisory Board is meeting right here at City Hall at 6:30 PM. On Thursday, June 26th, this is a great image, coffee with the cop for the first time at McDonald's, 999-5 Wadsworth Parkway, and that starts at 9:00 AM. You can drop in anytime up until 11:00 AM and have coffee with one of our police officers. Next slide, please. Also this week, on Friday, June 27th, happy to announce another successful movies in the park, and that's showing the movie Elemental, and that will be at Westminster High School at 6933 North Raleigh. That movie will start at 7:00 PM, so show up a little early and get a great spot. You can see some of the folks in that image from an earlier photo, sitting right near the screen. And then on Saturday, June 28th, another Shred-a-thon hosted at our Public Safety Center, and that will run from 9:00 AM to noon. So if you have any confidential documents or papers that you'd like to have safely disposed up by professionals, please bring those by for free shredding and disposal. Next slide, please. For our next meeting, we have no meeting scheduled for Monday, June 30th. That is the fifth Monday of June. We have two months a year where there is a fifth Monday, and we do not have regularly scheduled meetings on those days, so there will be no meeting on Monday, the 30th. Next slide, please. So our next meeting will be actually on Monday, July 7th, and that will start at 6:30 here in City Council Chambers. This agenda being two weeks out may be adjusted, but we are anticipating an information-only item for you. That will be a 2024 Report of Administratively Approved Preliminary and Official Development Plan Amendments. So some amendments to PDPs and ODPs are approved by staff, and that's a summary report for the year that we'll present to you, so you can go through those presentations that night. We will have two, Regulations on Use and Access Related to City Properties and Facilities and Providing for Enforcement by Park Rangers. So this is an update as directed by City Council regarding the lands that are not park and open space lands, and then a presentation on Neighborhood Streets and Emergency Services, polling results, as I mentioned, and then next steps. Finally, there will be an executive session item that night, and that will be for the purpose of discussing strategy and progress on a potential sale, acquisition, trade, or exchange of property or property rights of city-owned open space east of Westminster Boulevard on the south side of West 104th Avenue. Next slide, please. You can reach the city to report a concern or raise a question by submitting a ticket through Access Westminster. This is our newly overhauled app. If you don't have it, please get it for your phone. It's very easy to use, and you can get that at westminsterco.gov/AccessWestminster, and you can reach our staff directly at 303-658-2400, our website, westminsterco.gov, and any one of our four social media platforms, Facebook, Instagram, X, or Nextdoor. That's all I have, Mayor.
Any questions? Councilor Carmelia?
No question, just comments. And I just, I want to emphasize, I think it's pretty amazing that I knew we would win awards at the American Waterworks Association Conference, and this is a globally recognized conference. And so I just want folks to know how amazing our staff are, the fact that we knew we would win in the water world, and we did, for both distribution and wastewater. I think that's pretty cool. And I also want to recognize our own Andrea Song, who is now VP of the American Waterworks Association. So just a big shout out to all of our facilities folks. They're really amazing.
That brings us to City Council comments. Councilor Hott?
Yes. So I want to thank everyone who came out tonight. I will discuss more about the Rocky Flats signage when we get there. I unfortunately was sick when we gave out the Pride proclamation. I was very sad to miss that night, and since we won't have another meeting in June, I want to say Happy Pride to everybody. And I also want to bring up that on Thursday at 6:00, we're having Pride Night at the Butterfly Pavilion. So this is the first year that we have something in the budget to celebrate pride as a city, and we didn't have time this year to get something together in like a park or a celebration on our own, so Parks and Rec had the great idea to partner with the Butterfly Pavilion. And so our Parks and Rec Department, they are actually doing a lot of the work for that. So thank you to Parks and Rec, and I'm very excited, and next year we'll have an even bigger celebration. And then I also wanted to thank Alan Farb for his comments. The group that you brought up, Alan, you said is called Stand With Us? Yes? Okay. Thank you. I was unaware of what that group did or stood for. I don't want to delay because I think it's really important that we stand against anti-Semitism and we stand against violence. However, it pathers me that while we are saying that violence is not okay, we are adding a group that doesn't necessarily agree when it comes to Palestinian people. And I just don't think that those things need to be conflated right now. What happened was anti-Semitic, and we need to stand against that, but I also don't think that we should not be supporting or using an organization that contributes to violence. I don't think violence is okay, no matter what the person's nationality is, no matter what group they are a part of. And so I don't know how other councilors feel, but I guess I have a question for council or I don't know if it's the city manager or the attorney. What can we do so we don't delay this, but we also are not supporting groups that we may not want to support? So that's what I have to say about that, and that's all I have for comments. Thank you.
Mr. Frankel?
Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor. With regard to Councilor Hott's question, I believe that when Item 11B comes forward for council consideration, if there is a motion to approve the resolution with an edit, you could specify what that edit might look like, and if the edit is to modify Paragraph 6, the reference to Stand With Us, you could make that as part of your motion.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that answer. Thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Carmelia?
Thank you so much. I will save the majority of my comments as they are related to our agenda this evening, but I did want to mention that I attended the annual Rocky Flats Report, which was a public meeting on this past Wednesday, and I found it interesting. The report was very standard. It said that there were no real changes. It said that soil and air and water, that none of it was above our state standards, whatever those are. As we all know, there's no standard that's safe, so it was somewhat irrelevant. They did also have an update on the species listed, plants, animals, fauna, which was somewhat interesting for, if you're interested in that, which I am. It was supposed to be posted on their government site, energy.gov, and we were told that the recording would be available and the slides would be available, and I had planned to send a newsletter out to as many folks as I could to let you... send a newsletter out to as many folks as I could to let you all have a recording of the event so that you had that information. Unfortunately, it's not been posted. The last time the site has been updated is 2020. I did reach out to them already. I got an automated response, and so I just wanted to mention that if this is something that you care about, there is an annual report. It happens every summer. I did listen in because this is the first time it was presented to the general public and was not presented to the now-gone Rocky Flats Stewardship Council. And so I just put this out to the public, you know, I'm hoping to have a recording and more slides for you to see yourself as soon as I can, and I'll keep pursuing that. But, you know, I think we should all pursue this from the DOE. So it's energy.gov/rockyflats.
Counselor Ireland?
Thank you all that came out to speak. I appreciate all the citizens that come out and share their opinions, whether I agree with them or not. I like to hear all points of view. Thank you so much for those that came about the signage and making our government transparent to the citizens. I appreciate that. And thank you, Jim, for your transparency that you brought forward about the rodeo and the costs there, and that's my concern. You spoke for me as well as I could speak for myself, so thank you all for coming out, and I thank us again and keep coming. Thanks.
Counselor Demat?
Thank you, Mayor. Just real briefly, so those of you who are used to coming to my Paulistin Pilsner, for the next three months with the summer and a lot of campaign things going on, I actually am doing more of a happy hour. So it will be the third Wednesday of every, or fourth Wednesday of every month from 5 to 6 at Cocopelli. So we'll be doing that this Wednesday, 5 to 6. So if you are somebody who comes and enjoys that, you can enjoy that for the next three months, fourth Wednesday from 5 to 6 at Cocopelli. I'll be there.
Counselor Azadi?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank everyone for coming out, and I wanted to thank my colleagues. In the pre-meeting just before this, I asked my colleagues for permission to present the proclamation for Elizabeth Price. Home and Marital Service was last Wednesday after drafted, the proclamation with her son Larry Price, and that was approved 7-0, so I wanted to thank my colleagues for accepting that, and she was a wonderful woman, and I call her the mom of the city. Everyone's very sad that she's gone, and I think it's going to be a great day when we present that.
I just wanted to bring up, I shared most of my stuff in pre-council comments, but is Eric here, Otzelberger? He's probably listening. Oh, he's in there. I know we have Arts Week, and Eric, I was invited to Community Reach's art gala, which just means they set up in one of the conference rooms there at Community Reach at 122nd. And it was one of those days, I was slammed three deep, and it was from 12 to 4, and I got there about 10 after 3. It was impactful. I did not know that they had a group with all the mental health that they give to people. They have an art group, and they use it to get rid of and show and get out there what they're dealing with. So each, and it was just, it wasn't just like paint. It was sometimes you seen, one woman works at Hobby Shop, and one of the areas she works in, she has to, on silk flowers, the blooms come off, and you pick up a stem, and there's only one flower there. She's been told she can discard that if, you know, you can't put it back altogether. And the owner realized how she so loved those flowers and was making things out of even one stem, and told her it was okay if she took those flowers. Her display was out of the moon and using all things that would have normally been thrown away. But it's the tile that just has their first name, and then it's what those tiles said. It was so moving and so impactful that I hope, I mean, I did not know this program existed, so I wanted to be sure and tell you that next year, when you're planning Arts Week, you need to go visit Community Reach and get some of these pieces. It will help people understand the demons people are dealing with, how they're coping, how they're screaming for help, and what that artwork represents. I can't say enough. I mean, I got home and I just told my husband, I said, I gotta sit here for an hour, don't talk to me, I just have to process. It was, it touched your soul, so I just wanted to share. They would be a great addition. Thanks.
Anyone else? That brings us to consent agenda. Counselor Demat?
Thank you, Mayor. I moved to consent agenda items 8A through 8C.
Mayor Protem? Second. Spin moved in second to approve items 8A through 8C. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please. Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
Counselor Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Hott?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Normella?
Yes.
And Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote. That brings us to councilor's bill number 20. Counselor Demat?
Thank you, Mayor. I moved to pass council bill number 20 on first reading appropriating a transfer of 1.2 million in the general fund carryover to the General Capital Improvement Fund for the Rodeo Market Renovation Project.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
Spin moved in second to approve councilor's bill number 20. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Demat?
Quick question for staff, just so we get it on the record. So in terms of the money, can you remind us how much of the money will be paid back out of the investment from the business?
Thank you for the question, Counselor Demat. Stephanie Troller of our Community Services Department, Acting Community Services Director, will be able to answer that question for us. Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you, Stephanie Troller. Nice to see you, Mayor and Council. $391,000 will be repaid back for the tenant finishes of that total cost. Additionally, as a reminder, there's additional costs in that budget that go to support some additional work in the neighboring adjacent properties as well.
Great. I would recommend folks look at the details of the, because the devil's always in the details, and this isn't just a straight us giving money to one property owner or one business owner. The reality, pre-meeting, we talked about a bad property owner, and we've seen a lot of bad property owners, and in this case, we're the bad property owner. We should have been taking care of that property since we took it over, over a decade ago, and that's just the reality of it. And I know I've harped on this many, many times, and the staff who were here when it was taken over aren't here, so I don't put this against the current staff. However, many of these improvements need to happen because it's our property, and we should take care of it. It's a historic property, there's historic fees or monies that are put into it, so it wouldn't be a simple demolition if we wanted to tear it down. We would have to unwind the, that historic money that we've put into the building. It's a lot more complicated on top of the fact that this is a community asset and it has a piece of our history, a longstanding piece of our history. So I want people to understand that, and then I do appreciate the thoughtfulness from the speaker in terms of going and looking at the restaurant. But I will tell you, I work in the restaurant industry, part-time job. I do a lot of different things, but I do manage at my family's restaurant. They've been there 61 years. I can tell you, depending on the day, you might come in on a day where we have three people, but I promise you, that's not every day, otherwise we wouldn't have been there for 61 years. And I have to imagine, I'm sitting in this seat, seeing all the businesses who unfortunately folded during COVID. If you made it through COVID and you were two weeks old, that's pretty impressive. Just knowing what my own family's business went through and other restaurant owners in the city of Westminster went through, that was a hard time for restaurateurs, and quite frankly, they were kind of the lifeline of a lot of things, that that was the thing most people looked forward to, being able to support those businesses. So I just want folks to really understand the, you know, the whole view of this and why I would support it. I think it's a fair thing to be critical of it because it is a big investment, but it isn't just straight an investment in one business. I'm glad that staff found a business who clearly understands their business model because that's what it's going to take to be successful, but I also just want folks to understand why we're putting this money in and what it goes to. And like Ms. Troller said, there's a substantial amount of money that's going to the neighboring Grange. I would have liked to see that stuff happen, whether this passed or not, because those are things that we should have done as a good neighbor. For example, the loop around the park, that should have never been stopped in their parking lot. That should have been a full loop that people could walk around. It's silly to me. So a lot of complexities in this, but I'm happy to see this moving forward and us actually doing something with this, and I'm happy to support it.
Mayor Protem?
I won't repeat much of what Counselor Demat said, but I do agree that this is something that we need to do, and I just wanted from staff to have, ask the dollar question a little bit differently, to ask how much of the money that we're putting into this is going directly to a business versus being invested in our assets.
There's actually $0 going directly into the business, the bulk of this is going into the property.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Carmelia?
Thank you. I want to add to what was just said and say that I really do respect the concerns that have been brought forward on this investment. I just want, there was a resident who came several months ago with more paperwork than even council usually inundates me with, which is impressive, and I did take the time to look through it, and I heard his concerns, and it is, it's interesting because of our uncertain climate. All of that said, what I haven't heard are healthy alternatives, right? And so to the points that were just made, this is not necessarily only an investment in a certain business, but it's an investment directly into our community as well as into a building that, as was already stated, that we have the responsibility to take care of, and no matter what we do, if we take care of that building responsibly, it will be an expensive venture. That said, I am really grateful we have the owner here. You did a lot to ease my concerns by speaking tonight, and so thank you for coming. Thank you for doing that public comment for us. I think that we're really fortunate to have someone who is not just proving themselves through COVID, which is extremely impressive, but is so personally invested in our community. We need that. We need somebody who cares about the long-term impacts of what is happening in that specific area of our city. And so I think that we should all be celebrating this moment to have arrived and celebrating the work of our staff. Thank you so much. I know this has been a long time in the works, so I think really for all of us, this is a victory.
Counselor Ireland?
I think I'm the only one opposed to this project on the City Council, and it's for a number of reasons. Parking was an issue for me. It still has not been addressed in a satisfactory way. The fact that we're helping one private business, and then there's others down there that have historical houses, buildings, otherwise. And I've talked to several residents down there that are not happy with how much we're spending on this. We're acting like everyone's happy in southwest Westminster, spending 4.5 million, when their fire department needs money and we're asking for a sales tax increase. So I don't think everyone feels as strongly as you think, and so I will be voting gets this. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just want to echo everything that's been said and remind our answer that we got, that we're giving zero to the owner, and this is, this is our responsibility. We are bad landowners right now. We have landowners or people come that have bad landlords. Well, we're one of them down there, and either we choose to demolish it and pay probably close to the same amount to demolish it, or we put in it what needs to be done so that any business could go in there. So I think it was prudent to wait to know what business was going in there before we put the money in, because we could have put all this money in and somebody comes in that didn't need half of what somebody else needs. So I, it is on us. It isn't on the, on the business. It is, this property is ours, and I think the people in Historic Westminster deserve to not have it just sitting there and broken windows and whatever else, and the Grange long last needs the improvements that we did to them, that it makes sense that we undo what we did to them, so that is part of the cost. So Counselor Ireland?
In our packet, we were given how much it would cost and how much we have into it, and we have about $900,000 over the past, since 2000, correct me if I, I think it was 2004, we're into it about $900,000, and it would cost about $300,000 to demolish it. I'm not saying we should demolish it, but I'm saying we shouldn't be doing a private business, especially that has no parking. That is not a recipe for success. But if we do demolish it, it is a lot less money than 4.5 million dollars.
Counselor Demat?
I just want to point out the fact that the $300,000 number that was quoted was just to demolish the building, and that was an estimate. It does not include the fact that there is historic dollars that are put into that building, that you would have to figure out how you're going to unwind that if you wanted to just straight demolish it.
It included the $50,000 for the money to give back.
You would have to figure out how you unwind that money. Those monies were spent from, I'm assuming probably from state funds, and that would have to be made hold in order for you to take that off, that designation off of the building.
Roll call, please. Counselor Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Hott?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Normella?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
No.
And Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote. That brings us to resolution 8. Mayor?
There's a second.
There's actually a second. Oh, sorry, sorry.
I thought it was all one, too. That's why I went over there and asked. Contingent upon the second reading of council bill number 20, I move to authorize the city manager to execute a contract amendment with WCG Construction, Inc.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
Spin moved in second to approve the second piece of 11A. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please. Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Hott?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Normella?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
No.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
And Counselor Demat?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote. That brings us to resolution 8. Counselor Demat?
Thank you, Mayor. I moved to resolution number 8, Denouncing Antisemitism and Condemning the Anti-Semitic Attack on Participants of the Run for Life, Run for Their Lives Walk in Boulder and Denounce Antisemitism in All Forms.
And did you want to approve the edit?
Can we give a second? I want--
Okay. Mayor Protem?
Second, although I'm favorable to the edit.
Go ahead.
So I'll accept the edit as original motion maker. However, I don't know, and I'm not arguing, you know, I don't know enough, but I do know enough about politics to know that groups sometimes get bad shade, so I want to at least read what this group says that they stand for. I'm happy to take it out because I don't want to delay it, and I don't think we have time to go out and vet it, but I think that this group deserves to at least have their mission statement read, because if folks want to go listen into and read into them, I think that's fair, you know, so I just want to be fair to this Stand With Us group. And so this is on their website. Their mission is Supporting Israel and Fighting Antisemitism Around the World. We are inspired by our love of Israel, our belief that education is the road to peace, our commitment to stand up for Israel and the Jewish people. Stand With Us is an international, nonpartisan education organization that supports Israel and fights antisemitism. Stand With Us empowers and energizes students and communities with leadership, training, education programs on hundreds of college campuses, high schools, and middle schools. Stand With Us informs through social media, print, digital materials, films, weekly newsletter, and missions to Israel. Founded in 2001 and headquartered in Los Angeles, the organization has programs on six continents with chapters and offices throughout the U.S., Israel, UK, Canada, Brazil, Argentina, and the Netherlands, Australia, and South Africa. For over a decade, Stand With Us has consistently received the highest possible ratings from charity navigator and guide star and is ranked among the top 3% in charities in the country. Stand With Us is registered as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit and Section 46 charity in Israel. Stand With Us is not-- Stand With Us is not politically aligned in any country. The organization does not and has never advocated specific policies for Israel. Our work and respect for Israel's democratically elected government are not contingent on which parties are in power. Our goal is to counter antisemitism, educate the public about Israel, empower others to educate their communities, and make it possible to have reasonable, informed conversation about Israel's histories, policies, humanitarian aid, and on campuses and communities around the world. So I just wanted, you know, again, and I'm happy to move forward with us striking it just because we don't know, but I wanted to be fair to the group because that's what they say they believe, and I have no reason to doubt that.
Counselor Haat?
Yes, thank you. So before I move an amendment, thank you very much, Counselor Demott, for reading that. That makes me want it to be removed more because this is about antisemitism. This is not about Israel. And I don't think we need to be bringing Israel into an antisemitic attack that happened here in Boulder. This was an antisemitic attack. I think we need to focus on the fact that it was antisemitic and not get involved in what is going on across the world. This is not a support of Israel. This is not a support of Palestine. This is, this is support and anti, and fighting antisemitism. And so I want that to be the focus and not the focus to be on Israel because this is something that happened in one of our neighboring communities, and I think we need to focus on that. So I would like to move to amend the resolution to modify by striking the reference Stand With Us in paragraph six.
Counselor Demott?
Again, I'm happy to accept the amendment. I will say for me, standing with Israel is an okay thing in some of what they've went through from the terrorist attacks that we've seen. I've seen some of the video. I've seen blood-soaked pants from people who were raped by the attackers of that music festival, and it's despicable to me. It was hard to see. It's something that will never go out of my mind. However, I don't disagree with what you're saying as far as what this resolution is about. So I'm, again, happy to accept that amendment, but I just want, you know, that said for me because that's just my personal stance.
And Mayor Protem, are you okay with the amendment?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Counselor Carmelia?
I was hoping to be the one to also make the motion, but I would like, my feedback is I would like to amend the amendment. Personally, I just think that we should strike number six entirely. Whenever we start listing out folks, we invariably miss some folks who should be included and then include some folks who maybe we don't all agree with. And so I reread this and I really like number five. It's real strong. Number seven's real strong. And so I thought, you know, maybe we as a city can stand our loan and say that we condemn antisemitism and don't need to list the organizations.
Do we have anybody that wants to second that second motion?
I second it.
Go ahead.
As the original motion maker, I'm happy with the amendment that was given by Counselor Haat, and I'm going to stick with it. I'm not willing to accept another amendment.
District Attorney, do we go with the last amendment first?
I'd recommend that council vote on the motion as modified by Counselor Haat, which was accepted by the maker of the original motion.
All right. So before us is the original motion to approve the proclamation, editing out the Stand With Us in paragraph six, correct?
Correct. May I make one more comment? This is something that is deeply personal to my family. It's not something that I talk about a lot, but I live in a Jewish household. And while I have not gone through the, it's a really big process to convert, I do practice Judaism. And so I just want folks to know that this is deeply personal to me and my family, and this is very important, and I am very happy that as a city, we are taking a stand against antisemitism.
Counselor Carmelia? Okay. Roll call, please. Counselor Haat?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Normella?
Sorry, I'm just looking at six again. I'm sorry, hold on.
Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
Counselor Demott?
Yes.
And Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven-zero vote. Nothing else before us. We, it is 8:20. We'll adjourn with a few-minute break in between and go to post-session. Okay, next up is presentation or proposed update to the city site naming and renaming policy.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to turn it over to Alex Reeves. Alex is our operations manager in Parks, Recreation, and Libraries.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, councilors, Alex Reeves, operations manager within Parks, Recreation, and Libraries. I'm here to discuss with you all a proposed update to the city of Westminster's site naming and renaming policy. This revised policy expands upon the existing park naming guidelines and aims to create a clear, fair, and transparent process for naming or renaming all city-owned and leased The purpose of this policy is an expansion of the former policy, which only applied to parks and open space, to now include all city-owned or leased properties. It also establishes a standardized process to ensure consistency across departments and sites. It also ensures community involvement, transparency, and fairness throughout the naming process. This policy provides clear guidelines for council, staff, and the public while excluding roads, bridges, and rights-of-way. I want to discuss how we got to this point. The policy update process begins with an internal review of the existing naming guidelines, which focuses slowly on parks and open space. A revised draft was created for PRL facilities, parks, and open space, and shared with the Parks, Recreation Libraries, and Open Space Advisory Board, also known as PROSLAB. Based on the feedback and internal conversations, the scope was expanded to include all city facilities and leased properties. We also met with a broader cross-departmental staff group and presented the draft again to PROSLAB as well as inclusivity board. Tonight, we are seeking council feedback and direction to finalize the policy for formal approval. The proposed naming criteria fall into four categories, four categories. Historic events, places, and persons, names that honor individuals or events tied to Westminster's heritage, natural features, names tied to recognizable geographic landmarks or environmental significance, exceptional individuals or organizations, names that honor those with a lasting positive community impact, major gifts and sponsorships, where naming rights are tied to a financial contribution. We believe these four core categories provide a balanced framework. The naming process includes several key steps. A written proposal is submitted to the city manager's office. Staff convenes a committee for vetting and evaluation and law for a 90-day pay period, I mean, day period, thinking about pay. The proposal is shared with the appropriate advisory boards, community engagement, where we do neighborhood outreach, as well as feedback collection. The proposal is then brought to city council for formal review and consideration. If approved, staff manages implementation, including signage updates, renaming events, and system changes. Although renaming of existing sites is discouraged, but may be warranted in certain situations, when the current name compromises public trust or the city's reputation, or when the original naming justification is no longer relevant. To ensure transparency, the city will notify the public using multiple communication channels. Once a site has been named or renamed, it will remain in place for a minimum of 25 years unless special circumstances justify reconsideration. We are committed to ensuring strong community engagement throughout the naming process. Public input will be gathered through focus groups Public input will be gathered through focus groups, meetings and outreach events. Notifications will include signage at effective sites, mailers and digital communications. Advisory boards will play a crucial role in reviewing proposals and ensuring alignment with Westminster values. So tonight, we are asking for your feedback on the proposed site naming and renaming policy. With your guidance, we will finalize the policy for formal approval and implementation.
Any questions, Councilor Hunt?
Oh, I just want to say I think this is great. I like that even though it's 25 years, you allow for special circumstances because sometimes things happen that we can't foresee. I mean, I think this is very well thought out and knowing just since I've been on council, some issues that have arrived with renaming places, I'll just say, this will make sure that that doesn't happen again. So I really appreciate it.
Anyone else? Councilor Ireland?
So what does it cost to rename something? Are we going to have surveys? Are we going to have consultants? I mean, I don't want any of those, so public input's fine with me, but not outside consultants and surveys.
Yeah, it's usually internally, just the cost is just changing the monument size as well as other directional signs that may be out there. So it just depends on the cost. So a monument sign costs about $6,000 right now currently at every place.
Well, and Councilor Ireland, to your question, any sort of focus group or if there was some sort of neighborhood engagement, that is something that the operations, our community, well, if it was like on PRL, our marketing and communications team would have to handle, but that's something we'd have to work in to our work plan. And I think of something similar like Kensington Park, Totem Focus Groups, that's something we did in-house, but that involved several of us, you know, a significant amount of energy. So it's just, there is some finite resource to how many of these public engagements we can manage at any one given time with renaming.
Well, how many are we going to entertain? That's the thing. That's not in this, how many we'll entertain in a year.
There's, we're not offering any quotas, but I just, my humble plea is, you know, and for our peers and colleagues in other departments, that, you know, as Alex mentioned, the intent here is to have community engagement, but that, that's going to take some resource and, you know, and trade-offs to do that.
Have you had an ask on this? Like people asking to rename something?
I have something in.
I know the rodeo, but anything else?
No, so it was asked a while ago and I've been waiting for this to come forward, that we named the, well, there was two different thoughts to name something for Vi-June, who was the original female councilperson and the original female mayor of the city, who was the one who led the Women's March on City Hall when it came to water. And so originally the ask was potentially to do the water plant, but the family preferred the Justice Center. So I've asked for the courthouse to be named after Vi-June, the Vi-June Justice Center. Additionally, I asked Scott Wagner, who was one of our police officers who passed away from cancer, and he was also a war vet. And so we had an ask a while ago about naming one of the courtrooms after him for Scott Wagner. So I've been waiting on this specifically and those asks have been out there for a good amount of time, probably a good year and a half.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody besides his ask though?
Well, as the mayor can attest to, there was a town hall style voice vote at the Sheridan Green Stratford Park event. So I think the community is very clear in what they'd like that expanded park in Stratford to be renamed. So that, in addition to Vi-June, the former mayor and the interest around the courthouse that we're aware of at this time.
And maybe Councilor Ireland, I can add that City Manager's perspective. The, because of the number of new facilities being built, drinking water facility, the replacement courthouse, the work at the Sheridan Green site and a recent misstep on a renaming, this was really the time to bring forward for City Council to consider a more rigorous process, knowing that we have new facilities coming on board, knowing that, you know, Councilor DeMott's comments, that council members are interested in certain naming opportunities that we can see coming with new facilities. And we thought that the best path forward would be to bring to you a comprehensive draft policy that we worked through our stakeholder groups for you to have a look at and see that everything that you might be thinking of to, you know, suggest a naming for would be able to be handled in a process like this. And then it provides the guardrails for you to receive that request in a public format and address it. Hopefully that makes sense. It's just, it was the right time. There's so many things coming forward. And if you, I mean, if you just scattershotted, if we asked you to scattershot naming opportunities, it just felt like it wasn't going to be very good for the public process, if that makes sense.
So what do we need to do for Sheridan Green?
So there is, as one of the attachments in the packet, there's a basic application that just two pages, very basic, I think. You know, provided you, given your direction on this, that naming application is the first step and then we can go from there.
Councilor DeMott?
I just wanted to add for the discussion too. Since I've been involved, not just on council, there's been a variety of things that have been renamed where the city didn't do that as far as I know before. The first thing that I was involved with was Jessica Ridgeway Park. And I know some of the challenges that, you know, not doing those kind of things before, and especially nationally, as we saw some things where people were, you know, looking back at things that were named certain ways and questioning them. There was a lot of discussion around it, even with the Ridgeway Park, about it used to be called Chelsea Park, which is the area where I grew up. And I know at the time, the question was, well, who, why was it Chelsea Park? Was that somebody? Are we renaming something that was for a specific reason? And as staff found out, a lot of the things are just named for parks in England, Westminster, England. So, you know, then I know there was an iteration of that since I've been on council and this is a change of it. And to me, this is a good thing because this is just learning that we've done along the way. Another example is we renamed the greenhouse after Bob Briggs, who passed away, that was a former councilperson, as well as a RTD board member, as well as a state rep, who did a lot of different things in the community. So I think this is good because it's, you know, is a good public process that keeps us out of trouble, has a way to look back and say, why did we name it? I like the addition of the 25 years because that's something new so that, you know, you're just not having people, you know, in 10 years decide to change something without having some sort of documentation to look back and say, why was it? When was it? Why did they do it? So from my perspective, you know, being involved in it, a handful of these.
Number ten?
I just want to say that was, your point was just one of the things that struck me when I was reading this earlier was just, yes, we had a lot of things that we were trying to emulate another community and now we have our own rich history of over 100 years. And so I really value that we are establishing a way to recognize our history and our culture. So I appreciate that we've done this and it is a really good time to do that.
Thank you for bringing this forward. I'm really grateful to see, as we know, I love processes. So really grateful to see a process formalized around this. And to Councilor DeMott's point, now we have record as well. So process and record, that's fabulous. And I like everything about it. I don't see any suggestions. I think my one question was somewhat answered by our discussion, but my question was, I don't see any different part of the process if it came from internally. And so I believe that that's the point of it and I like that part of it, if that is the point of it. So let's say that, because we had some unique naming conventions over the past year, instances where we needed a unique solution. But my question was going to be, you know, if City Council has a suggestion or the mayor, et cetera, do we use the same process? And it sounds like this is a one fits all. Okay, thank you. I think that makes sense because it goes to our boards. So that's fabulous. Just wanted to clarify on that. We can't all just be, you know, say this is what we're going to do, but I like that. I think it's great. This is good.
First of all, I love the mayor's informal at the Sheridan Green. I think we should just do that, but I love this process.
I already have the things that they talk about, so I can just do the paperwork and send it on its way. The survey's already been done.
And I want to thank staff and the PRL board. I know that they had a lot of input into this. The one question I have is related to something that's relevant but may not fit directly into this. However, it's something that is visible throughout the city, all over the city, and it's the Adopt a Street program. We currently have no, I checked in with Jody, we don't have any regulations on the naming of what people can put on those signs on the Adopt a Street. And it's visible to everyone who drives by, walks by. I recently had a resident who complained about a sign that wasn't a name, it wasn't a group, it was just a political belief. And I told her, well, yeah, we don't have any regulations on it. And she's like, well, then I'll just organize the other side of the political, right, and just start putting it. So I think there's a big risk of not having any rules or regulations around what names can be put on signs. And if we want to keep our city politically demotivated, de, or what's the word, non-political, right, which I think we should be, we should have some kind of process. And I think the easiest way, rather than creating a whole new policy, might just be to include that in the scope of, if you have a name for, so say you want to adopt the street, if you have a name for it, it should go through a filter and this is the right filter. I don't know what you guys did think about that, but we don't have any filter right now.
I don't disagree with you that maybe that's something that we should look at, but I would, I would keep it separate. And my reason is because I've been a part of some of those teams that go out and do the Adopt a Street. I mean, that's, that's just like, we adopted this part of the street, so we're going to clean it. But I agree with you, like, there should be some discretion around what they put on the signs. Because we could have an Adopt a Street by do what Dave DeMott does, I mean, which sounds great to me. But, so I think that might be something that might be a follow-up in my mind, just because I think that this process is a little bit different in terms of what we're trying to accomplish with it.
And, Councilors, I would agree with that. I mean, with Adopt a Street and Adopt a Park, we've been engaged with the City Attorney's Office with some concerns that have been raised and, you know, considerations around content neutrality. So I hear and understand that, okay, that that's a worthwhile effort, but maybe not having that as part of this would probably be.
Yeah, and that's fair, but I would like to have that discussion at some point. You know, I think it's time to put some guardrails around it. So maybe if, Jody, whenever we can, let's just have that discussion.
I hear no complaints about what you brought forward and thanks for all your work. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
Alex did a tremendous job.
Yes, good job, Alex.
He did such a great job with PRL facilities and the board. He got to do it citywide.
Is this your first time presenting?
Yes.
Oh, great job.
Thank you.
I didn't even realize. I've seen you so much, I didn't even realize you hadn't presented yet.
Thanks, Alex.
Thank you.
Next up, signs.
Eric is just going to move around the end of the table and I'm going to introduce Eric Otzelberger, Parks, Recreation and Libraries Director, for presentation on proposed signage on Woman Creek Parcel. And we all also received a significant amount of public input tonight. So Mr. Otzelberger, do you mind taking a look at it?
I'm your manager, Andrews, and thank you all. Eric Otzelberger, Parks, Rec and Libraries Director. I have a brief presentation and then we'll open it up for your direction. You heard from many of our stakeholders on this issue this evening and not a new issue. And it's certainly been a journey on a lot of considerations of the Woman Creek Parcel. So this evening, just a quick recap. Through previous engagements with City Council, we were asked to work on meaningful educational signage near the Indiana Bridge crossing Woman Creek to the Rocky Plains Wildlife Refuge. We've engaged stakeholders, many of them are here this evening and we thank, I sincerely thank them for their educational, you know, what they've given me as far as awareness on certain issues. And we've also engaged with others in the corridor, you know, exploring corridor-wide potential messaging. This evening, we have a few alternatives, both some staff-generated alternatives and then alternatives from others that for your consideration and are looking for direction to move forward as the bridge decking is in place and looking to move forward on placing that signage in those visuals. So in the staff report, there were three options that were staff's attempt to balance competing views on this and respect the intent of a variety of stakeholders, acknowledge the complexities and support personal choice. The language in each of the three alternatives from alternative one, two to three is sort of escalating, if you will, in its just directness as far as some of the potential risks there. I have the three alternatives, not intending for you to read those in their entirety, but just for quick reference, we have the three alternatives here. And I'll just mention that in conversations with stakeholders, this alternative three, as far as staff-generated alternatives, was the, I guess, preferred option while acknowledging attachment one in your packet, which has language from stakeholders, as you heard this evening, the desired intent from several folks with us this evening. With alternative three and just with interpretive signage overall, a principle that we try to keep in mind is the 3:33 rule, which is three seconds, 30 seconds, three minutes. And that's just general interpretive signage, you know, where some people just get their attention for a little bit. Others might have a little, you know, peak curiosity and maybe spend a little bit more time. That's where the 30 seconds comes in to consume something. And then those that are really interested, not that this is a cardinal rule, but a general guideline is about, you know, trying to have text take no more than three minutes for the average person to read. So that was just something that we were mindful of in putting things together. One thing I will note in engagement with stakeholders in this option three, the word safe is in there and just want to acknowledge that safe is probably not the best word to use when it comes to recreational use. You would recommend acceptable being maybe a replacement for the word safe. There's just so much, as you all know, around this issue that I wouldn't advise or recommend using the word safe in any language. So my apologies for that being in this option here. As far as visuals, so one of the things that, for your general direction, you know, looking at the radiation symbol is something to try to gain attention. There are images, you know, as far as history there, that we could include images of the former weapons plant, but just trying to have some educational backstory. And I guess if there are any feelings or preferences on visuals, we stand ready to receive that direction as well. But that's, that's all I have. I have the three options, but just with many of our stakeholders, attachment one has their language. We're not opposed to it as staff. We were trying to respect the intent of a lot of that language and condense it to just be a more consumable fashion. So that's where our three alternatives came in.
Number ten?
Up to questions.
So, yeah, the, originally when I was reading the first, like, the three alternatives, I was saying, okay, so alternative three got to be, it seemed like it was going in the better direction. I think though, after I read all of the other potential, you know, like Boulder Counties and the alternative or attachment ones, I felt like it didn't go quite far enough and it just needed a little more detail. And where I think that, I don't, I would say that the rule of capturing someone's attention quickly and getting right to the point for that three and 30-second component, I think that this is drafted in the right way. I wouldn't say the attachment one was drafted in a way that will, you know, the psychology of it capture people appropriately. So, but the issue I have with alternative three is it starts out talking about vegetation and this is not why we have this sign up. And so I would immediately want to have us And so I would immediately want to have us jump into, this has nuclear, or, you know, like, get into the details of this, this area has an issue, you should be concerned, you know, read the following info. I'm not saying that that's what you should say, but, you know, the, I want us to jump into the topic. And I also think that, I'll just add that the visual, I would like to see the, the yellow marker. Because that will be the three-second thing to actually make people look at this. So, that is my recommendation. I, you know, I'm not going to be as picky about language. I do appreciate your, your comment about safe versus acceptable. I also just, you know, to picket words like trace amounts versus detectable amounts or, you know, I don't want to trivialize, you know, what's out there and the concern that people have. So I just want to make sure that we're properly reflecting that in the language that we use.
Councilor Zadi?
I would, uh, so first of all, thanks for going back and actually going through and getting what the other folks are doing, right, and working with different stakeholders. But from everything we heard tonight, I, in my office hours today was just back-to-back stakeholders, guardians, all the folks, basically. They want attachment one and they had lots of reasons for it. They did not like alternative one, two, or three. I think one was the closest one from the consensus, but my vote is for attachment one. I, I think to Mayor Protem's point, we can change some language to be a little more three-three, three thirty-three. But I love the directness of it. I think it has everything we need in there and it has radioactive, so that same danger. Yeah, I think we should go with attachment one.
Yeah, I also agree that we should go with attachment one. The sign is a little bit different on attachment one than what you showed. I don't like it saying may, may, like, be, what, what did the, can you bring it back up? So I can, yeah, may expose you to radioactive, radioactive materials. It's not a may, it will, you will be exposed. So I like this sign better because it just says danger radioactive. It's just plain, it's, I, I think that the signal is good because it crosses any potential language barriers. So I think it's really important. I really do not like the word may because that makes it sound like you might be, you will be exposed. So I don't, don't prefer that, I prefer what's in attachment one.
Councilor Ireland?
I agree with Councilor Zadi and Councilor Ha, I want it to be strong. They did, we did, I also talked about where we would place them. They were concerned it was on the social trail that we thought we left. That they would like those little radioactive signs along the social trail, little ones just with the radioactive sign. And the main sign at the dog park. And maybe go with Broomfield and make another sign on their property together. But we had to talk to Broomfield about that.
No, Councilor Ireland, and I appreciate, one of the things we talked with the stakeholders about it, with, because of the current reality out there and, yes, there's the bridge crossing, but there are several points where people might come from of using that, like, wayfinding, you know, some smaller form signage to maybe try to get attention. But as far as that more substantive, you know, in-depth, you know, and if we're going whatever narrative and language we go with, you know, making sure we have sufficient real estate in an impactful place. But we'll certainly coordinate with our Broomfield colleagues as well because some of the things that we thought maybe they were doing, they're not doing with their existing alignment. So, yeah, so there's, there's potential coordination there, if they're aligned.
All right, thank you. Councilor DeMott?
I have a question for Mr. Frankel. So when we get into saying may, and you will, I mean, I understand what Councilor Ha is saying. I guess my concern is are we getting ourselves into some legal liability where we're stating things as fact versus saying there's potential risk? My only question, just because I, like, I know there's, I understand the concern, but there's, you know, federal agencies saying this is okay. I'm not going to go hang out out there, I think it's concerning, but I just want to know from a legal standpoint for the city. I feel like we have a duty to make sure that we're doing what's legally defensible for us as a, as a city.
Thanks for the question, Councilor DeMott. I think if, if the evidence is that visiting the refuge may expose people, I mean, that's the question really, what does the evidence show? Is there an evidence that visiting will expose? I don't know, but that is the state of the evidence.
Well, I guess that's kind of the point I'm trying to make to my colleagues in terms of what's going through my head is we have heard from individuals who've done their own testing. We've heard from government agencies who have done their testing and they are saying different things. And so that leaves us somewhere in the middle. And so you go to court and, you know, if somebody decides, an agency decides, hey, the city of Westminster is being slanderous to, you know, fish and wildlife, you know, is that, is, like, do we feel strong enough about that to get into that kind of legal battle? And, I mean, if we're not concerned about that, then, you know, great. I kind of have the same feeling as Mayor Protem. Like, I, I don't dislike option three, I think there could be some tweaks or even putting nuclear site above the other things because both things can be true, but I think our intent was to let you know that this site potentially could be dangerous for you because of what it was. I would like to see the, the yellow radiation sign over this so that you kind of have, as an eye-getter. And then, you know, that would, I think, prompt people to read down into the details. And it's not that I, you know, I understand where Councilor Ha and Councilor Zadi are coming from. I'm just concerned about, are we getting ourselves into legal liability? If the attorney doesn't feel we are, I'm kind of agnostic about, you know, that, you know, will versus may, I guess I'm just concerned about the legal liability of it.
And just to clarify, I wasn't saying we should change the wording of that sign to will. I was saying we should use a sign in attachment one that just says danger radioactive.
Okay. That, I, I think that, I appreciate the clarification because I'm comfortable with that. I'm just uncomfortable us, you know, putting out our thought.
Right, I was saying that I like that sign better because, yeah.
I would be okay with that, that sign above something like this, you know, because it does put that strong message out, which is what we all agreed to. I think all seven of us said we wanted strong signage, no matter which direction we went with the path, with the trails.
Councilor Camille?
I have some questions about the signage, following up, I think, on Councilor Ireland's point. How many of these are we planning to put out?
Well...
And where?
I guess pending, pending your direction. So our intent at this point was to have a major kiosk immediately adjacent to the bridge. And then, you know, this concept of some smaller signage, you know, getting that attention. That was what, what we were planning. I know some questions and some ideas have been raised as far as signage elsewhere. Where we have, you know, Dog Park is something that was referenced, I mean, where we have some existing kiosks. I guess part of the question too is wanting to be respectful and even with those kiosks, there's an installation, so we want to be, we're minimizing any disruption that we have out there per, per previous policy direction.
Right, so following up on your point right now for minimizing disruption, we want to be mindful there. So we need to keep signs small. Fiscal impact, I think they need to be small, brevity is important. And I also think detail is important. So this is what I would like to see. My opinion is we should have a really impactful sign that is short and to the point and definitely use the international radiation symbol. We use the first paragraph of the attachment one that was provided. And then personally, I also really like the instructions for visitors that was in option two to be included, but we can debate that. But then I'd really like to see somewhere, just where we can provide a more in-depth option that goes into, so let's say we had, I don't know, six of those signs, right, in brevity, at the dog park, at the entrance, at the trail site, wherever. But I'd really like to see, there is nowhere, now, is it our city's responsibility? That could be debated, right? But the site itself still does not provide a deep history. We have that one long paragraph by the horse, right, but that's about it. If we were open to it, I really think it'd be great to have a more in-depth section of signage. And that could have the vegetation, the wildlife, and here's the history of the Superfund site and everything that you're seeing. And that would have more of the information that is attached on that attachment one. It could also have more of your information that you put into those alternatives, you know, some of the conflict, et cetera. But that's my proposal. I'd really like to see it short, to the point, thirty seconds, you look at it, here's the radiation symbol, here's that first paragraph of warning in the attachment one. And then somewhere just have a larger sign or signs.
My question is, I agree with, who's going to read this? The most impactful thing. They're on their bikes. They will see it rolling past, they're not stopping. Those that do stop to read anything to get everything anybody wants, can we just put a QR code? So we don't have to have a huge, huge sign that's going to take good structure.
And Mayor, great question. We've explored, okay, is, is there a neutral clearinghouse? I think there were some, including myself previously, that believed that perhaps the Rocky Flats Stewardship Council would be an option for that, that many of our stakeholders have concerns about that and some of the information available. So we could, we could certainly explore that, though, tactically. If, whatever longer-form information we want to refer to or put out there, we could do that because, I mean, real estate's limited, as you mentioned, folks on bikes. And that's where, even with stakeholders, we were talking about, okay, how do you get attention? Because of just the way society is, people tune out signage and it just becomes kind of light noise at times, so.
Especially if they're coming from the other side of the road and up and over. They're on their bike, they're going.
I'll just say to pile on to the signage point, that is a good point. And I do know of families who have worked here, who have looked and want. The reason I suggested the more in-depth signage is because I know of families who, you know, their loved ones have passed away from cancer from working on this facility. And this is almost like a memorial for them. And they have nowhere to go, that gives more information when they try to tell people about why their loved one is gone. They go to this one thing by the horse that that's it. And there's really not a whole lot more information unless you go online and try to do all your own detective work, which is a big hurdle and that lack of transparency for the community. I feel like a lot of this conversation is the community crying out after decades of working on this facility or living by it and asking for more. And to our point earlier, we made, our vote, for example, on the bark was somewhat of a sentimental vote. And I feel like our decision on this is a somewhat, not only do we owe it to put their health and safety as number one priority, but it's also, you know, we owe them an explanation in some way for what's happened there on site. I just put all that to say that somewhere there should be a more detailed explanation.
Councilor DeMott?
I appreciate the sentiment, I've lived next to it my entire life. And so I will tell you, I don't know that the city of Westminster is the one that deserves the responsibility for it. The federal government does and, and the people that ran it for them. And I've had friends and all through my life who, who worked out there. So I, I want us to make sure that we're, my preference would be that we're direct to the point, that we're trying to warn people about what they're going to. I feel like that's what we wanted to accomplish. If we had a QR code that potentially gave different resources that people could go make up their own mind and we're not necessarily making claims, like, I'm, I'm open to that. I think that there's a variety of different websites that, you know, you could share and just direct people to, say, here's more information you can find on it. I'm just hesitant to, as the city of Westminster, to take on that burden because it certainly wasn't us who was running a nuclear facility out there.
I agree with what Councilor DeMott just stated.
So, can we go back to the options here? Because I'm curious, Councilor Camille, are you saying you don't want attachment one?
Absolutely want attachment one, yes.
So is that forward?
Our concern was if, if we're going to do a QR, which I'm very against a QR, then a hundred percent attachment one. My concern was it's very long and so I thought we could just have that first paragraph because otherwise I am concerned that folks won't read it, especially as people are whizzing by on their bikes. So I wanted a more detailed explanation as well that included all the rest of the information. But if we're not going to do that, if the option is, you know, QR, then let's just do attachment one. Because people need as much explanation as possible.
So, so I ask that because I think it has all the background and explanation in attachment one. And I know some people, many people are on bikes and they won't go breeze by, but a lot of people are walking by it.
Exactly.
And some of them will stop their bikes and meet it.
Yes.
And I think it'll have everything, so.
Mayor Protem?
If we're going to use the, I, I think there's good information in attachment one. I think it needs to be edited so that it can actually accomplish the, the stop, the quick look. And so I, I would, I would not use it verbatim. I feel like it needs a little bit of, again, editing.
And I agree with that, I think a three thirty-three.
Yeah, so perhaps you could come, staff could come back with something that kind of is a little more attachment one-heavy, but that accomplishes the, you know, signage needs.
Well, with the direction I'm hearing from city council, we can certainly proceed in that fashion and engage with the stakeholders that have been kind enough to work with us to try to hone in, you know, mock-ups, if you will. And if we could collectively dial something in, return to city council for, you know, a, a look at that and, and your direction on that. So then we could, we could proceed because I know with some of the work out there, it's, it's, you know, doing something sooner rather than later seems to be advisable.
I do, I do think it's fair to at least state that, and I can't remember if this is in attachment one anymore, but to at least state what EPA, you know, says, that's fair. So, I, I don't remember if it was in there or not, but I thought that was at least useful. Again, I want to not allow that language, though, to trivialize.
Yeah, so it says the EPA and the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment maintain that the plutonium contamination on the wildlife refuge does not pose an unacceptable health threat to visitors.
Yeah, okay, so it's a no, okay.
So you heard the majority of where they're at, others that said they're okay with things, but the, they, everybody did agree with your yellow visuals.
So Will, Will, what I heard, just to confirm, Will, we'll dial in attachment one, work on some mock-ups and as far as visuals, use the radiation symbol as presented on attachment one with that.
Just get, if there's anything that you can squish or take out that's repetitive or not absolute, make it as short as possible, I mean, shorter than.
No horse and the mask?
And may I also, so...
And also where are we going to put them?
Thank you, I was going to say that as well, that we will come back with a location plan. And if there are two types of signage that, that, that staff works up with the stakeholders, the main one at the bridgehead and then the minor ones, we'll, we'll come back with it.
The dog park for the main one, so.
With the main one and then location plans for...
With Broomfield.
Supporting ones. And that the staff will work with the stakeholders who gave us attachment one on, on an edited version that appeals to that, that three thirty-three principle, which is a good one. And then we can bring that back.
And can we talk to Broomfield if they will allow us to do one together? On their side? side?
We, we can speak to Broomfield on that.
We can certainly do anything on our property, adjacent.
And if you could tell us what kind of sign, because we didn't wanna do the paths so that everything didn't get dusted up, but we're going to dig signs and do all that, so I wanna know what kind of signs we're putting in.
Yeah, and, and in the agenda materials, there was a, a sample of what a standalone kiosk could be, depending on what, where we finally end up with, you know, there's the three panel kiosk standalone, but we can return with that with the location.
But especially with smaller ones, I don't care, that's still disturbing the land.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's 9:15, and we're done.